The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Hello, everyone. I would like to call this meeting to order. Can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Chair Boshard.
Here.
Chair Boshard is present. Vice Chair McConnell.
Present.
Vice Chair McConnell is present. Commissioner Carpenter.
I believe he's excused.
Commissioner Carpenter is excused. Commissioner Calling.
Present.
Commissioner Calling is present. Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn is present. Commissioner Tomacek.
He is excused also.
Commissioner Tomacek is excused. Commissioner Mayo.
And I think he is also excused.
Commissioner Mayo is excused. Commissioner Zhang and Commissioner Torres are trying to join the meeting, and they are having audio difficulties. I will move them in as they join the meeting. Roll call is complete.
Very good. We have a quorum. And at this time, I'd like to ask if we can get a motion to approve the minutes of the June 22 meeting. Lawrence.
Yes, at this time, Mr. Chairman, I would like to move that the Commission accept the minutes from the meeting of June 22, 2021.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
All seconds.
Thank you, Commissioner McConnell. And I guess we need a roll call vote on this. So Jennifer, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Chair Boshard. Chair Boshard.
In favor.
Chair Boshard is in favor. Vice Chair McConnell.
Yes.
Vice Chair McConnell is in favor. Commissioner Calling.
In favor, yes.
Commissioner Calling is in favor. Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn is in favor. Roll call is complete. Roll call vote is complete.
Thank you. And we have a unanimous vote in favor. So the minutes are passed for the meeting on the June 22. Okay, this meeting has only one item on the agenda, and that is a presentation of the 24 Comprehensive Plan. Andrew Spurgeon will be the presenter. And whenever you're ready, Andrew. We can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, very good. Thank you.
Hey, this headset is sometimes a little tricky, but it helps me hear you much better. So if you'll indulge me with wearing the headset, I can hear you all as you provide feedback. So thank you, Chair Boshard and Commissioners, for allowing me to present to you tonight. I'm Andrew Spurgeon. I think many of you know who I am. But for the benefit of the audience that may be listening tonight, I'm the Long Range Planner in the Community Development Department. And we are here tonight as a follow-up. I presented the draft plan to you all in the April 27 meeting. And prior to that, we provided hard copies of the draft plan so you all can reference that without having to use the online interface. Of course, you're welcome to use the online interface. During that time, we've also done presentations to City Council and some other audiences that we'll talk about during the presentation. And we've received some public feedback from some of our residents in the community. We should be mindful that the comprehensive plan is the community's plan. It's not staff's plan. It's not the Planning Commission's plan. It's not the City Council's plan. It's really, should be reflective of the values of the community. So we have attempted as staff to capture the consensus points and put together a document that we believe is a vision for the community to guide us over the next 20 years. But we absolutely do want the feedback of the Commission tonight and help us refine this thing as we prepare for a final draft that we would bring back to you at a later date. I'm assuming you all can see the slideshow acceptably. Someone just confirm that?
Yes, I can see it.
Thank you. Thank you, appreciate it. The plan, the comprehensive plan that we've drafted has four guiding principles: thriving city, healthy places, great neighborhoods, and managed growth. And I've talked about that with you all in our prior presentations. But I'd just like to remind people that those are the four guiding principles. And that was really our way of summarizing and capturing the themes we heard through our community engagement over the last several years developing this plan. And so to make sure we're cognizant of that, we keep those four guiding principles on every slide in this presentation. And it's also in the header of every page in the plan document. So you may have noticed that. My presentation today will re-review the organization of the plan document, some key changes that staff has proposed as a result of the review process, and identify a timeline to finalize the plan. The agenda memo provided with the Planning Commission Packet includes some additional discussion beyond what I'll cover in the presentation. And the attachments includes the comments from the public, our referral agencies, some correspondence from property owners, and edits that we've already identified to include in the next draft. All right, this content has been shown before. But again, for the benefit of our audience that's listening tonight, I do like to describe the purpose of the comprehensive plan. The purpose is really to provide a guiding vision for the city's long-term vitality and identify character-defining elements and establish guidance for the city as it considers future programming and services for our residents. The guidance is expressed through goals and policies on topics such as land use, housing, recreation, utilities, and other content in the plan. The plan is long-term in nature. It's meant to be a 20-year planning horizon. But it is also a living document that's going to grow and change with the community over time. With its purpose as a long-term plan, it really needs to be separate from current operational considerations that may be considered more strategically through department strategic plans or staffing. And the Standard Planning Enabling Act from the federal government Department of Commerce actually talks about the role of the Planning Commission. And the Commission is really supposed to be separated from current day-to-day considerations and really maintain that long-term view. So we're trying to be in accordance with that. We're also trying to align with the Denver Regional Council of Governments Metrovision, which is the regional plan for communities in the front range. The City of Westminster currently uses the 2013 Comprehensive Plan. That plan is a great document, and we continue to use it and reference it in 2021. That plan was unique when it came forward because it departed from the more singular focus of land use of the city's earlier 1997 and 2004 plans and really started to incorporate other topics such as transportation, economic vitality, parks and recreation, city identity, urban design, and public safety to create a truly interdisciplinary plan, or you might say a comprehensive plan, comprehensive in its nature. And I think it is important to acknowledge Commissioners Boshard, Carpenter, McConnell, Mayo, Calling, and Dunn for your past participation with the Planning Commission and helping to bring forward the 2013 Comprehensive Plan. So we do appreciate your service to the city in doing so. This proposed new comprehensive plan will continue the reduced emphasis on land use and continue the more interdisciplinary nature of the plan and continue to strive for alignment with other citywide planning efforts and really thinking about how land use and development relates to other things such as public health and wellness, our economic resilience, sustainability, and the city's conservation efforts. As a forward-looking document, the plan does anticipate development of vacant land and potential annexations and has been closely coordinated with our interdepartmental staff to ensure that the city's finite resources and infrastructure can support the plan. The benefit of having this advanced planning work is it facilitates future discussions the Commission and City Council may have. When a project is before you, you don't end up in a difficult spot of having to answer whether there's water or infrastructure to serve a project. The comprehensive plan has done that. Since the plan is a living document, we do anticipate some amount of comprehensive plan amendments. And that's really when that higher analysis needs to occur if there are resource impacts because we're departing from the plan. This slide has also been shown to you previously. This is the planning framework for our Westminster Forward family of plans. It's a little bit important to understand how these plans relate to each other because they're a coordinated family of plans. The comprehensive plan really is not in isolation. It's part of this group of plans supported by an engagement process that we reach out to the community to talk about the comprehensive plan, the Parks Recreation Libraries Plan, Sustainability Plan, Transportation Mobility Plan, Water Supply Plan, and also Code FORWARD, our companion effort, to establish updated standards for new development. The city's vision statement informs all of the Westminster Forward plans. And each plan will seek to elaborate on the vision within the various areas of specialization. The benefit of that coordinated engagement process was a single point of interface for residents to direct comments to city staff. And then we, as city staff, could identify the plan or plans that respond to that concern. There are nine general planning themes that organize the content for both the Sustainability Plan and Comprehensive Plan. And these have overarching goals and policies for the other Westminster Forward plans. The Sustainability Plan addresses the, pardon me, seven of the nine themes, as shown in the purple box, being energy, natural resources, materials, and waste, economic resilience, housing and neighborhoods, transportation mobility, and health and wellness. The Comprehensive Plan then in turn focuses on the six themes more in the green box: economic resilience, housing and neighborhoods, land use and development, health and wellness, transportation mobility, and utilities and resources. Five cross-cutting topics also organize the plan themes. Upon release of the draft Sustainability Plan late last year, the climate cross-cutting topic was also added to the list. And upon direction from Planning Commission City Council, that may be something we add to the comprehensive plan as well. We've heard some feedback from City Council expressing an interest in adding the climate cross-cutting topic to the comprehensive plan. The Transportation Mobility Plan and Parks Recreation and Libraries Plan will take deeper dives into those more specific topic areas while building from the citywide policies introduced in the Sustainability and Comprehensive Plans. Again, Code FORWARD will be the avenue to establish more fine-grained standards for land use and development, housing, and sustainable design. The Westminster Forward plans function as a suite of complementary plans. And the comprehensive plan in particular is general and high level, while the other plans take deeper dives into those key topic areas. Sustainability, transportation, water in particular may need updating more frequently than the policies of the comprehensive plan. To the extent possible, staff has tried to avoid duplication of planned content and instead strived for alignment across these plans in the complementary topic areas to advance the city's vision. For example, more specific climate or energy-related content is housed in the Sustainability Plan, and that complements the Sustainable Development Discussion in Chapter 3 of the Comprehensive Plan. That's just one example. This slide shows the organization of the document. Hopefully, you all have gotten to spend a little time thumbing through the document since it was delivered in April. This organization is similar, again, to the draft Sustainability Plan, if you've looked at that document perhaps. Other content in the plan includes an introduction explaining existing conditions, demographics, and challenges for the plan to address, such as water growth and infrastructure. Chapter 2, Community Places, provides profiles for key areas to describe the character-defining elements, such as view preservation, parks or trails, or other unique characteristics to those locations. The Planned Administration Chapter, Chapter 9, explains how the city will interpret and administer the plan in out years and outlines related tools such as zoning and capital improvements and a reporting process that we'll have in place to regularly report back to Planning Commission City Council with progress on the plan. An analysis of potential annexation areas is included. That's Appendix D, that inventories considerations for these areas, when or if annexation is pursued at a later time. There is separately an implementation program that will identify strategies and actions to implement the plan that is being housed outside of the plan. That's viewed as more of a work plan that staff will use and update depending on priorities that come up, such as budgeting and other things. That'll be a little bit more nimble than changing the actual comprehensive plan. The flow chart on the right is kind of a reminder of how the policy chapters of the plan are set up. Each of those chapters begins with a background narrative explaining existing conditions, trends, and challenges, and then identifies a series of goals and policies with those. The use of figures through graphic tables is meant to inform the reader of key trends and considerations for future planning. But none of those data points is necessarily a policy. It's background information. Land use is important to the audience, Planning Commission City Council staff, for that matter. We realize land use is very important, but we should also be mindful that it's just one policy within the overall plan framework. And it needs to be considered with other policies in the document relative to housing, economic resiliency, wellness, resource conservation, and those related areas. Looking at the public comments that came in during the review of the draft plan, there were quite a few comments in that background narrative section of those policy documents, but not so much input on the goals and policies, which is really where the teeth of the plan is. And as such, there's not, staff has not identified a lot of changes to the goals and policies, given that there didn't seem to be a lot of objections to those, given how much feedback we went through since 2018 to help derive those goals and policies for the plan. Community Places, this is Chapter 2 of the plan. We started off the planning process, and I believe many of our Planning Commissioners were present back in August 2018, our first sort of large public event. In terms of considering appropriate planning areas for the city with either the largest vacant lands or areas where we anticipate redevelopment, we identified these areas to establish concepts for land use, building types, and amenities that inform, pardon me, both the comprehensive plan as well as our code project. And then we considered how to blend these areas with adjacent established areas with the appropriate transitions. In the community engagement, you may recall at some point, we called these opportunity areas. Sometimes, some of our staff refer to these as areas of change. Whatever you want to call them, the point is we wanted to acknowledge that most of the city is stable and not expected to change in the future. So we wanted to really focus on this small amount of land where some degree of change is anticipated. So these areas altogether are roughly 11% of the city's land area altogether. The profiles included in Chapter 2 of the plan will augment the more general direction of the land use map with that additional layer of considerations, such as views or trail connections, park locations, access points. It's just going to give us a little bit more guidance in the future when we have development in those locations beyond just a color on the land use map. The focus area concept that was introduced in the 2013 Comprehensive Plan is continued. Those are anticipated to have the highest densities and intensities. And then the next tier is what we call transition areas. And again, these are the areas either with the largest amounts of vacant land or where we anticipate redevelopment. And we wanted to have a vision in place for those locations. Transition areas, however, should not be equated with focus areas. They're not intended to develop as intensively or as densely as focus areas, but more, it's about recognizing these unique locations in the city that warrant considerations beyond just the color on the land use map and the opportunity to further implement those four guiding principles of thriving city, healthy places, great neighborhoods, and managed growth. Staff recommended land use changes as compared to the existing comprehensive plan are limited to those areas shown in Attachment 4. And we'll talk about that in just a little bit. So with this slide, I am going to shift gears and start talking about land use again. As I mentioned before, land use is really just one policy within the larger Comprehensive Plan and those other areas that we're talking about, such as economic resilience and utilities and resources. But again, we do recognize land use and development is front and center in the minds of the Planning Commission City Council, our residents, and even among many on staff. So I am going to spend a large amount of time in this presentation on the land use element and try to relate it to the other chapters of the plan. This plan has a somewhat different approach with land use than our prior plan. Instead of focusing as much on the use on a property, we tried to identify existing patterns of development. And so we're calling these land use character types, really considering the character of an area, the look and feel of an area, whether it's low density or higher density, urban or suburban, and really trying to identify those character-defining elements and demonstrating what that looks like through the graphics in the document as well as the text and description there. This plan proposes to have the 14 land use character types that are listed on the left of this slide. And this was presented to Planning Commission previously, if this looks a little familiar. Again, we'll have photos and a description of the purpose of the land use type and identification of anticipated uses, building forms, and design considerations. And then, again, the benefit of our coordinated Westminster Forward effort is that our code is being developed or being updated alongside the comprehensive plan. And our code work can really go that extra level in terms of specificity, talking about land uses and sustainable design and those other considerations that are a little bit more technical than in the comprehensive plan. This slide shows the overall citywide distribution of the land use types. The distribution of land use was closely correlated with development of our water supply plan, and the findings of which were presented to the Planning Commission back at May 11, if you recall. The Water Supply Plan identifies the effects of weather and conservation trends as the most significant drivers, more so than land use in terms of future water supply. Working from that 11% of the city's area identified in the opportunity areas or areas of change exercise, strategic and limited land use changes are proposed only in and around those areas. The proposed land use diagram with the plan, with the draft plan, maintains over 98.6% of the city's land area with existing or equivalent land use types to what they are now. So that remaining balance, that 1.3% of the city is split with roughly 170 acres proposed for lesser residential density or reduced commercial intensity, and 120 acres proposed for an increase in residential density or greater commercial intensity. Again, those were detailed in Attachment 4. Parks and open space continue to be the dominant land area of the city. You see the big green wedge on the pie chart there. It's 37% of the city's land area. Low-density residential and residential estate combined represent about 30% of the city's land area. That's the yellow slice of that pie. The highest densities, which are mixed-use activities center and our specific plan areas, those for about 2% of the city are 411 acres. Those are about 2% of the city or 411 acres altogether. The two multi-family types constitute about 4% of the city, that's the kind of brown orange. Slice coming up to the top of the pie chart there. There are no new sites proposed for what this plan is calling urban multi-family, which is what we used to call our 36. We do show the previously approved sites that are already entitled, but we're not proposing to add any. And then the lower density multi-family, what we're calling suburban multi-family, but we've called our 18 in the past. There is only one new site beyond what's already out there today. Proposed for that and that's a four acre site in historic Westminster. Financial resiliency was identified as an objective with this plan and so in addition to correlating the land use map with our water supply. We did do a fiscal impact analysis to determine net revenues or deficits resulting from buildout. This analysis did identify a positive revenue position for the city, that was good news. We did model kind of a stress test scenario to see what would happen if only the residential. Development occurred with none of the commercial development. That resulted in a roughly neutral outcome, neither positive nor negative. So that was, that was also kind of good news, it was better outcome than some of us may have predicted frankly. But we do want to again, support financial resiliency and so we have brought forward. Land use map that balances residential and non-residential types to get, to keep us in that revenue positive position. And and that's what's in the draft plan. I'm going to move along here to specific land use map changes, again, these are described in attachment four with the packet. Would the commission care for me to go through all of the land use changes individually? Is that something you would like at this time?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, thanks.
How extensive, Andrew, how extensive are these changes?
It's about five or six slides.
Okay.
So yeah, I'm going to stay, I'm going to stay fairly high level, we won't, I'm not going to dive into. The details of all of these, by all means, feel free to stop and ask questions as I do these. Again, these are in attachment four of your materials, but I know. With the, what I do present to city council on August 2nd. It will, it will need to be a fairly concise presentation, so I really appreciate the opportunity to. Take a little bit of a deeper dive with the planning commissions and. You know, understand that city council, you know, has faith in you all to provide feedback to us and help us refine this thing as we move forward. So these are divided into again, these sort of sub areas that we use, these areas of change or opportunity areas. I'm going to kind of generally move across the city in a north to south fashion as best I can with our strange geography. But starting up in the north I-25 area, what's proposed in the draft plan is to. Maintain the equivalent of the existing office RD High. In our current plan with the new employment office institutional campus for. The St. Anthony's Hospital as well as the eastern part of the property, we like to call it Orchard Lakes. Which is in that north I-25 area adjacent to the hospital. Moving south between 144th and 136th Avenue. We're proposing what we're calling the employment flex for the balance of the Orchard Lakes and what we call the Foster Farm Property. That's a somewhat lower scaled office designation and it provides a degree of of flex type uses. I think a good analogy for what that might look like would be our park center area where you have. Primarily office users, but then some sort of flex or very light industrial type uses. Mixed into that business park environment, that's what we're anticipating in this area. Another analogy might be if you're familiar with Boulder, the the area around the Boulder. Community Hospital on Arapahoe Avenue and how there's, there's office and some industrial uses adjacent to it, including the Ball Corporation. And then across Arapahoe Avenue, you have a residential development pattern, so imagine that turned 90 degrees using Huron as that divider. And that might be another analog to those locations. Staff believes that these changes will better align with the market potential. But also fit within the constraints of our our north Huron sewer interceptor. And continue to preserve the city's vision for employment in that area that would provide daytime populations. For the retail areas at 144th and 136th Avenue. So I'm going to move south now to our 120th Avenue Activity Center. This is really the area that that we commonly think of as Park Center as well as to the south with the Park 1200 development and the Tri-State. Campus. Here, there's, there's several changes proposed, including again, the employment flex designation on a city owned property. Where Pecos curves around to 124th Avenue. Redesignating the parcel at the southwest corner of 122nd and Park Center Drive to residential medium density. Which is a lower density than the adjacent Brody Apartments just to the west there. A third change is cleaning up the retail property at the southwest corner of Pecos and West 121st. Adjacent to that new Uptown Suites Hotel to better respond to those anticipated land uses in Park Center with that employment flex. Land use type. And then moving a little bit farther south, south of 116th Avenue. The western portion of the Tri-State property as well as what we call the Fog Property there fronting on Navajo. That is proposed for residential medium density designation while maintaining the balance of the land for employment flex. The plan acknowledges the Parks Recreation Library's Department pursuit of the Ranch Creek Corridor for the open space system. And then an additional change in this area is to designate the northwest corner of 112th and Huron for commercial use. That area, if you're familiar with it, has some higher density residential development around it, but there's really not. Any commercial services up there other than the convenience store and the bank and I guess the post office is there. So having some commercial at that intersection may be a way to provide some neighborhood services to that residential area up there. Moving south and west over to the Church Ranch area. Which is really fairly large, larger than some of these other areas. But there's just some, again, strategic and limited land use changes proposed. Moving from north to south here, the Winter Subdivision, which is really along the city limit line. Up there on Old Wadsworth Boulevard near 111th, north of the Green Knoll subdivision. This is proposed for residential low density to better reflect what we believe would be the anticipated residential development scheme in that location. Next is a very small property on the west side of Old Wadsworth Boulevard at 103rd Avenue. This is proposed for the employment flex land use to complement the other. Land uses in the city adjacent to that site, it's a little bit of a strange situation since the. Other properties on the west side of Old Wadsworth are in the county, but the properties along the east side of. Old Wadsworth are in the city and they have that designation, so this would make it consistent with that and it would allow us to continue to try to focus. Our retail at the existing centers such as Walnut Creek and those other established centers in the Church Ranch area. And important for this area, one of the larger sites with a land use change in the draft plan. Is the Water 2025 site on Westminster Boulevard. Going south from the Butterfly Pavilion, just before you get to that overpass over 36. The city has begun an acquisition process for that portion of that larger 105 acre property. And because the purchase, because the acquisition process is underway, we're going to go on and acknowledge that. Through the comprehensive plan with the public quasi-public designation to support the future water treatment facility at that location. In the downtown vicinity area, which actually crosses over 36 to some of those. Commercial areas adjacent to our Westminster City Hall. We've actually only only identified one land use change over there that staff is supporting. And it would be the six acres at the far northern end of the city center shopping center. Those of you that are familiar with that center that has the Barnes Noble and the Einstein's Bagels. There used to be a series of restaurants on the frontage and some other uses. If you've been by lately, you may have noticed that they've lost tenants. What the owners proposed and and we think this makes some sense is to. Shift those remaining retail uses into that lower three quarters, 80% of the the property. And redevelop that far northern portion of the property. That could provide a better transition between the retail center and that senior housing that's across the canal to the north there. So that's, that's the only change proposed in the vicinity of downtown Westminster. The area that we call Brook Hill over around 92nd down to 88th Avenue along Wad's Parkway. We've identified two changes proposed for that area. The first of those is the property at the northwest corner of Old Wad's Boulevard and 92nd. Avenue, this is proposed for a commercial designation, if you're familiar with that location, it has a veterinary clinic. Already established on the site, so this designation would probably be more consistent with the anticipated uses there over time. And then a second one in this area is a somewhat unusual property along Car Street, right where it bends to go around. Just north of Moore Middle School. That property, which is, which actually has the street going through the property, so if that's developed, it'll need to be properly platted and dedicating the right of way. That's proposed for the residential low density designation and and given the small size of that property, it would probably. And the unusual shape after they designate the the right of way, it would probably allow two houses. Was really the development potential there. Moving south and east from there, the area that we're calling Westminster Heights. This area was begging for a name and we really struggled with what that should be, we didn't want to create confusion with the larger Shaw Heights area, which. Which is much more extensive in its geographic reach, we were trying to focus in this kind of high point adjacent to Federal and 84th. So Sean McCartney, our brilliant urban designer proposed this name and we've kind of been using it. We really wanted to acknowledge the presence of institutional land uses in that that area. And institutions that are probably going to be around for a long time. Or at least as long as as we have this plan in place before we do a future plan. So that would include the Crown Point Academy on the east side of Federal at 86th Avenue. The property used for the water tower on Zuni at about 85th Avenue, just north of 84th. And then actually at request of Pillar of Fire. They would like to actually remove the residential land use designation that they currently have. And move to the public quasi-public designation for 17 acres that they own in that area. Sandwiched between Federal Boulevard and Irving Street between 82nd and 83rd, so that's the sort of blue rectangle. On the lower left of that image. And then finally is a small property that staff has struggled with when people have approached us. It fronts on Federal, it's at just south of 81st Avenue. The properties in that area are very commercial. You know, Westminster in general does not have a strip commercial form of development, but this is one of those, one of those few areas. Where we do have that and for reasons that some of us don't really understand, there's a single family designation for that property. We think that property should have the commercial designation similar to everything around it. Given that it fronts on Federal and it's between a car wash and another automotive type of use. I don't know that anyone would want to build a single family house at that location. Moving down south, and this will be the last of these areas that I'm doing this land use discussion with, so we'll move on after this slide. This is the area around Westminster Station. It's a transition area in the draft plan. First, we wanted to recognize there's two existing assisted living nursing care facilities. For the current comprehensive plan actually has those for the public quasi-public use. I have investigated those, those are private entities for profit from what I can tell. If those type of facilities came in today, staff would make them go to a high density residential use in order to allow what they're doing, so. We thought it would be better just to acknowledge the existing use and and the land use that would support those existing uses there. Next is really working in companion with our Harris Park Community Vision Plan, I believe some of you have been to those. Meetings, I know I saw a few planning commissioners. Down there in historic Westminster when you're doing those meetings, so. We wanted the comprehensive plan and the Harris Park Plan really to be aligned with each other, so we're proposing the mixed use neighborhood designation. With the comprehensive plan and then cross reference that Harris Park Plan, so the reader of the comprehensive plan would know. To go to that other document where there's a greater level of detail regarding the the uses and densities and what the design. And the public realm frankly are all addressed in that Harris Park Plan, again, at a greater. Level of detail than in the comprehensive plan. The site on the west side of Lowell, south of the BNSF Railroad is proposed for suburban multi-family. Again, this is the only location in the entire city where a new multi-family site is proposed beyond the current plan. It's a four acre site that currently has the stadium auto parts. In neighborhood discussions, people kind of refer to it as a junkyard, I don't think that's really fair, it actually looks like a fairly well-run. Salvage operation, but that is how people look at it and and there is. Some sense of opportunity for that property to be redeveloped at the use that would be more compatible with what's anticipated. Across Lowell in our Westminster Station specific plan area. And then finally in this area, a little bit farther south on Lowell at 69th Place. There's some properties that. May have been flipped inadvertently in our existing comprehensive plan, there's a little commercial area with a bar. And some commercial businesses, that's actually designated as industrial in our current plan and then the Benson and Benson. Salvage yard to the south of that is designated commercial, it seems like those are backwards and so we're proposing to flip those around. To better reflect what they're actually doing there and the likely use of that property in the long term. So that really concludes that area by area review of the land use changes and as I described, it's about. 1.3% of the city, most of our city is stable. It's generally suburban and it is expected to continue that way into the future, so really just thinking about those those limited areas. I'm going to shift gears out of land use and start talking about just some high points from the rest of the plan. So we can move on, I am a little over three quarters the way done with my presentation, if you're starting to look at the clock, so if you can bear with me. For these last few slides, then we can get discussion, feedback from you all. We introduced much of this prior to the Planning Commission, some of the new topic areas with the plan, but again, we wanted to. I guess remind the audience that may be listening, some of the differences with this comprehensive plan as compared to the current one. This plan introduces more of a neighborhood planning lens for considering new development. Sometimes in the past, development is really considered kind of in a silo without a lot of consideration for the neighborhood context and so. We really want to elevate the importance of that contextual discussion and and thinking about. of that contextual discussion and thinking about how a site fits in with what's around it, the access to services, supporting transportation, and those other considerations. And that's reinforced in several places in the plan. It's introduced in the Land Use and Development Chapter, but then it's further discussed in Chapter Seven, the Housing and Neighborhoods Chapter, as well as the Plan Administration Chapter in terms of how staff will coordinate future development reviews should this plan be adopted. Sustainable Design is introduced. It actually was in our existing comprehensive plan, but it's been updated really to align better with the Sustainability Plan and the multimodal considerations from the Transportation Mobility Plan. Some of these sustainability policies include the need for walkable neighborhoods, renewable energy, preservation of the natural ecosystems and their function, recommendations on some potential future code updates, and furtherance of sustainability concepts and green building practices such as solar access, energy efficiency, and green infrastructure. The Economic Resilience Chapter, which is Chapter Six, it has some of the most differences as compared to our existing comprehensive plan. It kind of reflects a paradigm shift in the economic development world from traditional recruitment and retention type of strategies to thinking more holistically about workforce development, creation of the amenity-laden environments that employers are looking for in this era, and discussion about support for smaller local businesses. And again, this also relates well to the concept of promoting great neighborhoods and reinvesting in our existing neighborhoods and business districts through partnerships, communication, and infrastructure planning. Similar to the strategies in the Sustainability Plan and the Water Supply Plan findings, the comprehensive plan does recognize the built-out nature of the city and that need to support our existing neighborhoods. And so as such, reinvestment in existing neighborhoods and housing stock is identified in the plan as a key topic, and again, reducing the emphasis on new development and thinking, how can we better support our residents and provide safe housing for all parts of the community? That would include thinking about future housing needs in those aging neighborhoods and the need to have access to supportive amenities and services, as well as helping homeowner associations with capacity building, and that is, again, similar to some of the content in the Sustainability Plan. The plan identifies policies for senior housing, which we know is in great demand, but there's currently not much policy guidance in our existing comprehensive plan on how we handle those things. So the plan articulates both the need for housing for seniors and special-needs populations, but also related policies, thinking about the spectrum of housing choices such as intergenerational households, households that are downsizing, and continuum-of-care-type facilities. Also thinking about how do we best support the senior community to ensure that they're part of a larger community? So we're really talking the plan about how senior housing should be blended in and around neighborhoods so that there's other generations to support the seniors, rather than tucking away senior housing in the middle of an office park or something, which is something you see in some of our neighboring cities, you see that happen sometimes. The new plan introduces concepts for wellness and healthy living, again, similar to some of the stuff in the Sustainability Plan, policies to support local food production, improving access to healthy foods, and considering those amenity spaces, the type of amenity areas that the Planning Commission sees through the PDP and ODP approval process, perhaps considering expanding the menu of what residential developers provide to give credit for community gardens and urban agriculture to supplement what we typically get, such as splash pads and hot tubs and that kind of thing, just thinking about that. And then, last but not least, again, thinking about our financial resiliency in future years. Policies in the plan include evaluation of revenue diversification opportunities, being proactive with industry changes that may impact our sales tax collections, and a recommendation to include a fiscal impact model to help inform future land use changes. Related content in the Utility and Resources Chapter, Chapter Eight, identifies the need to plan, budget, operate, and maintain our infrastructure using objective criteria such as the standards of the Clean Water Act, the Utility Condition Index, and putting the priority on public health when it comes to our infrastructure. Pertinent referral agencies were notified of the draft plan. That's a requirement of our Westminster Municipal Code, Section 1132, and that is described in a little bit greater detail in the Agenda Memo. We did receive responses from Adams Twelve Five-Star Schools, City of Arvada, City County of Broomfield, Colorado Department of Transportation, CDOT, Jefferson County, the Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport, City of Thornton, Tri-County Health, Westminster Public Schools, and Smart Commute North. Their response correspondence is included in Attachment Five. During review of the draft plan, we did also coordinate a presentation to the City Council on April 5th, and we will go back to them on August 2nd. We did talk to the Planning Commission previously back on April 27th, and we're pleased to be back before you tonight to get any additional feedback you have to help us make an updated draft. We did present to the Westminster Chamber of Commerce, first to their Government Affairs Committee, and then separately, a presentation to the Chamber's Board of Directors. I have to give a shout-out to Sean McCartney, our urban designer. He actually handled that second Chamber's presentation. I was unavailable that day, so I appreciate the team's support there. And finally, we did a presentation to the Home Builders Association of Metro Denver, because they're always interested when these things come up. Announcement of the availability of the draft plan was first publicized back on April 1st. At that time, we asked for comments by May 31st. We did also provide hard copies of the plan to the College Hill and Irving Street Libraries for those that didn't want to use the online interface. We also had hard copies available at our office for people that requested those. Summary of attachment, the summary of comments received is included in Attachment Six. Through the online interface, a total of one hundred and sixty-three comments from twenty-seven different people were received. That's after I pulled out the various staff that had comments, so. And that included primarily city residents and a few from the unincorporated Adams County area. The public review deadline was extended from May 31st out to June 13th, and that did provide for twenty-seven additional comments that we were able to review. This pie chart, which I realize is all goofed up now, I apologize for that. The labels have not displayed correctly. I will try to speak to that as best I can. As discussed in the Agenda Memo, the Transportation Mobility and Connections Chapter did receive the most input with twenty-five percent of all the submitted comments. Next was the Land Use and Development Chapter with twenty-one percent of the comments, and then the Community Places Chapter, Chapter Two, got nineteen percent of the comments. There were actually no comments received on Health Wellness and Community Services, Chapter Five, or on Economic Resilience, Chapter Six, and those are not shown on the pie chart, which of course, you all can't read the pie chart anyway. Apologize again. There was a question asked from a resident in that Economic Resilience Chapter, but there was no comments made. Again, it was a little bit surprising that most of the comments were on the Transportation Chapter, so I did coordinate with Christina Evanoff, who's the lead planner on that plan, and that was presented to Planning Commission last month, actually. We do believe in terms of the comprehensive plan that some of the comments made are better addressed in the Transportation Mobility Plan. Right-of-way profiles, recommendations on the number of lanes, those kind of technical matters, we really believe should be in the Transportation Mobility Plan and not in the comprehensive plan, which is a little more high-level in general in nature. We also add some other comments that don't really relate to any of the specific chapters. In looking through those, many of these were related to our public plan dedication, our PLD requirements, and then others related to pending development applications that will be scheduled for future quasi-judicial hearings of the Planning Commission and City Council. Comments on those pending development applications were shared with the planners assigned to those cases. Since those development applications were duly filed in good faith based on the existing comprehensive plan, we did not propose to change the land uses through this plan. Again, a future quasi-judicial hearing on those individual cases will occur in the future, at which time those site-specific concerns can be considered, and the Commission of City Council can decide as they will on those individual matters. The owners and/or potential buyers of several properties also provided feedback to staff. That is included in Attachment Seven. We are certainly sensitive to issues raised by those stakeholders. However, none of those results in specific changes to the land use diagram. Okay, moving on to a slide that does display properly. This is just a kind of an overview of some of the updates that we are proposing as a result of the feedback we received as a result of the draft, and of course, we do want to hear any additional feedback from the Planning Commission tonight to help us refine the plan. The first group of items at the top of the slide are things we actually heard from City Council, both through the prior presentation on the comprehensive plan, but also on the water supply plan. There was a suggestion from Mayor Sites to add the climate cross-cutting icon and expand the Healthy Places discussion relative to design considerations that support the environment, as well as a limitation on comprehensive plan amendments once per year. That is a policy change that we will be looking for direction from Council if that is something they want to include with this draft plan, but we wanted you all, as the Planning Commission, to be aware of that. The April 27th Planning Commission briefing also identified some edits that you all offered. Commissioner Carpenter had some edits that we noted, and we will include those. The bottom part of the slide, or some of the staff, identified changes, again, as a result of the outreach material that occurred. We will be only recommending those land use changes that I reviewed with you all, those that are shown in Attachment Four. The earlier draft plan did include some other land use changes that we will not be including. We'll be updating the parks and open space designations. There's been some changes that need to be reflected in the plan. For example, in March, City Council changed the designation of the land around Stanley Lake from parks to open space, and so the comprehensive plan really needs to be aligned with that. Our Parks Recreation Library staff is reviewing all of those, and we will make sure that gets, we get the right designation. We're going to be updating the Transportation Mobility Chapter to make sure we're aligned with the latest Transportation Mobility Plan draft. There's been some refinement there since this comprehensive plan draft went out, and also working to address some of the comments from CDOT that we got. Updating the Health Wellness and Community Services content in response to suggestions from Tri-County Health about urban and suburban agriculture, and updating the opportunities for partnerships with schools, a suggestion from Westminster Public Schools, and other changes described in Attachment Eight to improve reader understanding typos, definitions, that kind of thing. Chapter Nine of the plan does identify how the plan will be used with future decision-making, including development review and future amendments to the plan. Reporting process is proposed that will assess plan progress and identify where adjustments are needed. A separate implementation plan is proposed to be housed outside of the plan due to the frequency of updates of the implementation based on budgets, work plan priorities, staff capacity, and other variables. For reference, though, that has been included in your packet in Attachment Nine. The initial implementation focus is really going to be finishing up that Harris Park Community Vision Plan and our Code Forward project. That will really be our emphasis for the short term. In terms of the cost of implementing the plan, the plan specifically states there is no financial commitment to implement the plan. Public Works and Utilities has identified that the capital improvements that they anticipate with the plan is actually in line with their existing expectations from the existing comprehensive plan. The few land use changes proposed do not move the needle in terms of the Public Works and Utilities Department long-term planning. With the reduced emphasis on new development as the city reaches build-out, we do know that the criticality of infrastructure, water conservation, and support for aging neighborhoods is going to be a greater focus, and this is again echoed through the content in the Sustainability Plan, Water Supply Plan, and even the Transportation Mobility Plan. This slide shows the timeline that staff is recommending to complete review of the plan. Tonight, we do want to receive any additional feedback from the Planning Commission now that you've had a couple of months to get familiar with the draft. You could share that with us, and then we can report to City Council on August 2nd, the feedback we heard from the public as well as the Commission, and then help us refine the draft plan to make a final document that we'd bring back to adoption in the coming And I'll close out here just with a few key takeaways. Again, this is a citywide plan. It is high-level policy document, similar to the Sustainability Plan, and it's been organized around those common Westminster Forward themes. The Westminster Forward plans work in tandem as a coordinated suite of plans, and as such, the comprehensive plan is not in isolation from the Sustainability Plan, Transportation Plan, or those other planning efforts. The comprehensive plan is long-range in nature, and the goals and policies are anticipated to support the needs of the community and the changing needs that occur over the next twenty years, and thus, the plan really needs to be considered separately from those more immediate day-to-day considerations facing decision-makers today. The draft plan results from priorities identified in stakeholder interviews, community engagement, and has been refined based on those who submitted comments on the draft plan. The plan does carry over ninety-five of the previous plan's policies, although sometimes with modifications, and then there's sixty-six new policies with this plan. The land use changes proposed are strategic and limited, with about 1.3% of the city's land area proposed for change, and the balance remaining either what it is or the equivalent designations to what it is now. The plan proposes to increase the focus on neighborhood planning and the character development beyond just that parcel-by-parcel view of land use, and introduces some more relatable naming conventions for those land use types, such as the suburban multifamily rather than that R-18, that number and letter nomenclature. The land use character types have been mapped in the land use diagram, which function as one policy within the overall plan framework. These have been tested with the water supply plan and evaluated for fiscal impact at the citywide scale, as previously discussed, and in consideration of the Sustainability Plan strategies and Water Supply Plan findings, the comprehensive plan recognizes the resiliency in existence, and the resiliency of existing neighborhoods becomes a more central focus as the city nears build-out, and the impact of land use on the few remaining vacant lands becomes less critical over time in the context of resources and infrastructure. This concludes my presentation, and we do look forward to getting any additional feedback the Commission may have tonight to ensure we have a well-thought-out the Commission may have tonight to ensure we have a well-thought-out document to guide us into the future, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Andrew. That was an incredible presentation. I want to say right off that your understanding of the policies and the projects that are going ongoing in the city is very impressive, and I also wanted to go ahead and open it up to commissioners who might have questions. I have a real quick question. I noticed you mentioned in your summary that the staff is supporting the prohibition of cannabis within the city limits.
Yeah, yeah, let me apologize. That was, that was a slide that I updated, but apparently did a wrong version. We, we are not, we're not including that. That was, we, we received a referral comment from Westminster Public Schools. I think it was a well-intentioned request to include cannabis-type businesses on that list of uses you all sometimes encounter. We call that the potentially prohibited land uses. Rita, Rita McConnell, our planning manager, I think, made a very astute observation. Those cannabis-type uses, those are prohibited by municipal code right now and our police code. It's outside of our usual Title 11 that, that we deal with. So by moving it over to the potentially prohibited, it would actually open the door to the use, and we think that wasn't the intention. We think the intention was to leave it as a prohibited use, and so in further consideration, staying silent on it in the comprehensive plan would keep our existing prohibition in place, and we wouldn't want to inadvertently open the door without a larger policy discussion on that topic because people have strong feelings about that. So again, that, this slideshow had a couple of errors in it, and I apologize for that, and that was one of those two errors.
Okay, well, my comment was going to be that with the potential tax revenue from cannabis sales, I would think the city might want to consider making that an option and lifting the prohibition.
Okay.
It's a real, it's a real potential income revenue generator, so that's my only comment so far. Do any other commissioners wish to speak?
Okay, and with the cannabis, that might be something we do elevate to City Council, saying, you know, this is something we heard, so they can help decide if that's something they want to include or not.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Just go ahead and turn on your camera. There you go. Thank you. Commissioner Colley.
You know, I am, I'm very impressed by this comprehensive plan. Andrew, you did a great job. I didn't even, hardly noticed the slide with a few missing labels. Don't love that too much. I am, it's so thorough, and it's so hard for me to even find anything to make a recommendation about because it's just so well-done and so well-put together. I think having the time to go through it, maybe it was COVID, you guys just had a lot of extra time maybe to go through and, and get it all buttoned up, and, and the fact that it is a public plan and you did get a lot of input from the community, which is so important, so that it becomes a community plan, and it will grow over time, it will change. I really don't have anything to add. The, the one thing I did want to add, I did, I found the Economic Resilience Chapter really interesting, and I just wondered, is there any place in there to maybe take the knowledge that we have learned over this COVID with people working from home, and will that have any kind of impact on the comp plan? And what I mean is, you know, you, you spend a lot of time talking about people traveling to work, like commuting in and out of the city. I, for one, am never going back to work full-time. They've already, you're, you're, 60% of your time is going to, you know, you're going to split your time. It's going to be more like a 50/50 work balance now, so I will be in the city more, even though my employer is in a different city. I still don't know if that affects anything. It probably doesn't, but I didn't know if there was any way to address it, because I do think this has changed the way people work, so I don't know.
No, I, I appreciate that, and I think that's, that's kind of like the million-dollar question, is how much has COVID changed? And I was, I was before the Commission last year, I believe it was July 14th, 2020, and we, we were working on our first draft at that time, and I think a lot of us on staff, and I, if I recall some of the commissioner's feedback at that time, we, we thought we were facing a new reality with COVID. During the additional staff review, some very robust, even at a few moments contentious staff discussions, the thinking is that the comprehensive plan, being as long-term as it is, really needs to think, you know, beyond COVID and 20 years out, and Commissioner, I realize that's what you're getting at, but what, what we're hearing from our, our finance department, our budget policy staff, is really that the city, that not as much changes as some of us, including myself, may be anticipated, and the Dr. Cog Transportation Modeling for the region shows the traffic is over 90% back to what it was before. So we, I think what we're, where we are seeing some policy changes with this plan due to COVID is that greater interest in public health. That was already kind of out there before, but I think the pandemic really brought that attention to a lot more people, that access to healthy food. Remember when you couldn't get any food? How frustrating that was there for a month or so? And so that content is in there, and that discussion on economic resilience and revenue diversification, I think, is very important because we did see what happened last year when our sales tax collections got off from our modeling. You know, the good news is the city's in a better financial place already, but being mindful of that, that chapter, the Chapter Six, Economic Resilience, did benefit, if you went through, there's a lot of charts and stuff.
Yeah, very interesting.
Our economic development staff actually coordinated with the CU Lead School of Business up in Boulder, and they did some of that analysis. It was actually some, some other work that the city was undertaking, but it was pertinent to this COVID discussion, and so there, it was some of their expertise that, that informed Chapter Six and, and helped us look at the long-term needs. So, long story short, I'm sorry for rambling on and on, is that it's not as much impact, I think, as some of us thought perhaps last summer when we were before you.
Okay. Well, it's totally well-thought-out plan. You guys have done a great job. I know you've had a whole team working on it, so good job. I'm very pleased. I don't have anything else to add. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Colley, and looks like we have Commissioner McConnell would like to speak.
Thank you, Chair Bossard. So, Andrew, I didn't, I didn't consider your rambling on to be an annoyance. I thought it just showed your, your dedication, the intense work you put into this project. You're very passionate about it, and on a personal note, I think I was prob, last year I was probably more frustrated by the, the lack of toilet paper availability than I was thanks to, quite frankly. But I was looking at the, the employment flex character type, and that's kind of what we've been talking about here and how that may or may not change, and I think that you've addressed the changes in between primary uses and secondary uses, with primary being professional offices and office space, incubator space, et cetera. I, I see that not being as robust as it once was because of the last year, but I do see in secondary uses of the manufacturing, warehousing, fabrication, repair shops, et cetera, that we're, we're well-positioned with alternate uses for that same employment flex phase. Pretty well-covered, I think.
I, I think that's a great observation. I think you explained it perhaps better than I do. We, we did try to anticipate what is the changing nature of employment, and I think as you're implying, there's, there's going to be a need for some office, but we also need more of those flex-type spaces. That's actually something we were hearing even before COVID. There's not really a lot of those places in this, in, within our city limits for those type of uses to go to, so being more mindful of how those, how those contribute to the employment base, particularly startup-type businesses will often locate in an industrial area and perhaps grow later on into an office-type building, and so we, we do believe we need more of those type of spaces and probably not anticipate the amount of office development as perhaps the previous comprehensive plan.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McConnell, and do we have anyone else who wishes to comment? Just turn on your camera if you do. I guess all the long-winded people didn't show up tonight.
If I may, you know, Commissioner Carpenter did have some comments when we were before the Commission previously, and so I am planning to email him and just ask if he had any other comments to offer us, and I would certainly welcome if, if any of the other commissioners identify something, if they, if they spend any more time on the draft, or if they, they have something that, that didn't make sense, you know, feel free to contact us either by email or by phones. We are wired to get these calls, even if we're at home. Everything is all set up, but, you know, email is certainly helpful for us to reference and, and, and use. You know, we do want the feedback tonight, but tonight is not the end of it. We will continue getting, you know, your input as needed, you know, all the way up until the point we bring back a final draft for you to make a recommendation on. So I do appreciate the time tonight. I know I went on a little while at 7:17. I didn't realize how long we had been going, but it's always helpful for me to present to you all. It helps me prepare for City Council, frankly, and it helps me hear from you all and, and those other considerations that perhaps I hadn't thought of. So I'm very grateful for this opportunity tonight, and thank you for indulging me.
And we are very thankful for your thorough understanding of the issues, and your presentation showed that, and we've learned a lot from this tonight, so we appreciate it very much. Okay, I will ask one last time if there's any more comments. Doesn't look like there is, so thank you again, Andrew, and everyone can contact Andrew if they wish to via email, so this doesn't have to be the last that we comment. All right, with that, I would ask if there is any old business that we need to discuss Is there any miscellaneous business that we need to discuss? All right, then I am going to go ahead and say this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Jennifer and Andrew.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you very much. So grateful for your time.
Thanks, Andrew.
Thank you.